We'll now go to a discussion. Our first discussion of the evening is to discuss and possibly take action regarding the abatement, remediation, and related matters as it pertains to KCS Engine Number 503 located in Bryant Park. Public comments will be received. I think we're gonna open the discussion up with Ms. Latrice Gallo, if you would. And City Attorney, I think you're gonna be involved somewhat also. But we have a presentation, and then we're gonna open it up for public comment to see, kinda gauge where the citizens are. Good evening, Ms. Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I was asked to give a remediation timeline for KCS Engine 503. On September 7th, the City of Port Arthur is notified by TCQ of an oil spill located in Bryant Park. TCQ grants the City of Port Arthur 180 working days to remediate the oil spill. The following day, TCQ provides oil-assorbing booms to contain the area underneath the train. On October 6th, Total Safety has contacted to begin an initial assessment of the train to include asbestos and lead-based paint. Analytical results of Engine 503 is received by the city on October 9th. Analytical results from Total Safety confirms asbestos and lead-based paint above regulatory standards. The same day, the city investigates potential costs for restoration of the train. These were Class 1 estimates from Texas Transportation Museum, Texas Railroad Commissions that dealt with preservation of the train or restoration. Estimates included ranging from $150,000 to $500,000. Also, local and corporate KCS offices were contacted for their expertise, as well as reacquiring the train. They declined the offer, both offices. In October, management decision to remediate, abate, and demolish KCS Engine 503. As a directive, Total Safety has contacted again for quotes to remediate, abate, and demolish the train. Quotes are obtained from the City of Port Arthur by Total Safety on November 21st. Inland Environment provides a quote of $23,760, SciTex $94,800, and AAR $96,400 for the oil spill remediation, asbestos abatement, and demolition. On January 19th, Inland Environment contract is signed by interim city manager. February 12th, Inland Environment completes the removal of asbestos-containing material, and the project is halted on February 16th.
Okay. Thank you for that timeline.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
So basically, where we are today, the project has been halted, and it's council's decision to go ahead and make a decision on, it's council's option to make a decision on what would be a solution. Now, what you're about to see are three options, options. These are options. Option A is probably not the most attractive option, but that's where we were, so don't be alarmed at Option A. But I just, I do wanna kinda give you a little bit of the law behind Option A, and then move on to what would probably be more viable at this time. Basically, because this involves public health and safety, the city was trying to remediate the project, and under Chapter 252 of the Local Government Code, whenever it's something involve an immediate danger to public health and safety, there were homes impacted, you can award a contract. That was based on a March 6 deadline, 'cause they were given 180 days. The reason, I guess, this option is not necessarily being pursued is because the March deadline is now been extended to April 20th. So basically, the main thing I wanna point out on this slide is that the real deadline that TCQ has extended is now April 20th. And that will now allow for further consideration, so the council can utilize whatever methodology they believe is necessary, and April 20th is the new deadline. Now, the Option A would be to demolish. You can demolish, because it's a public health and safety hazard, I mean, the council could look at whatever options. That's where we were before. Basically, that would require an amended contract, and it would require proper disposal of whatever was left after the demolition. That would be basically considered salvage property, and it would not have any value to the city. So that's if you wanted to demolish. That could be done as a public health and safety option. But we'll move on to Option B. Option B would be getting this piece of property, personal property of the city, in the hands of a third party. So in the event the city does not wish to keep it, in the event the city does not wish to demolish it, and you wanna legally get it in the hands of a third party, then Option B, the appropriate process would be to do something like a simple RFP. A simple request for proposal is a process to facilitate a legal transfer of ownership. This particular item, since the 50s, has been property of the city. It was donated. And whenever you're dealing with the donation or transfer of ownership of personal property, you have to go through the correct legal process. So one of the best ways of doing this is for the council, because the city cannot just give its property away. You know, just, you have to have a legal process. So I'm sure most of you are familiar with RFPs. That would be a transfer to a third party, would be the subject of the RFP. There may be bid or bond insurance requirements to make sure that you have a bidder that can legally do it, you know, that has the ability to do it. You would set up some scoring factors, and you would set a specific removal date. Then any party, any organization, any company that would like to obtain the ownership of it could submit a RFP. Basically, we would set a deadline, and they would look at different factors. Disposition to a private entity would be based on a fair market value, because you can't just give city property unless there's a public purpose. However, because of the historical nature, due consideration can be given by the council if the conveyance of the private property would serve a predominantly public purpose in preserving the history of the city and the train. So basically, we could come up with an objective RFP, set a deadline. Anyone who is interested as a third party to own it would submit a proposal. And for example, for an RFP, it has to be advertised twice under state law. These are just some dates we put together. You would have a bid opening date after it's been properly advertised. The council would look at that, make a decision on who had the best proposal, as we do in all other cases. And if the council awards it, then there'd be a notice to proceed. Upon the notice to proceed being issued, the winner of the RFP or the proposer that's selected would then have a certain timeframe to get it out of the park, and it would meet the April 20th deadline, and will continue to work with TCQ. So that is an option if it wants to go to a third party, if the council deems it. This would just be the simple process that we would follow under state law. Next option would be Option C. And we talked about this at the last council meeting. If the city chose to keep it, it would be, there could be a full upgrade, or you could change the location of the train within Bryant Park with no upgrades. I can't, I'm not gonna be able to speak to the full upgrade in detail, but some things would be a cement foundation with a trough under the train, the lead-based paint issue, encapsulate the train, and you can see on the slide what a full upgrade would entail. Obviously, Mr. Newsom would be more knowledgeable about this issue if that's the route the council chose to go, or if they chose to just change the location of the train. And a basic change of location would cost the city about $45,000. So basically, that's what we're here for, to determine what would be suitable. Thankfully, we do have an extension, and you can look at all of your options, again, A, B, and C, and whatever the council deems necessary, as long as we meet that April 20th deadline. And if you have any questions, let me know.
I have one question. Say we do award, say we went with Option B, we awarded it by March 28th, and say March, April 19th comes around, are we looking, and it does, it's not out of the park, are we looking to get another extension from TCQ? Are we gonna be involved? Are we totally out of it, or how does that work?
No, we are obligated to meet TCQ's deadline. So whatever process you put in place, I think we need to make sure that we talk to them and get their permission. I'm not sure what modifications they would give, but we definitely, if we, if the council did decide on Option B, or any of the options, we really need to make certain, all options you need to meet April 20th. It is our obligation to get the ground remediated. And I'm sure there's several things you all can, that can be considered in order just to get the ground remediated, because even if it's not moved, the ground needs to be remediated.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Doucet?
Yes, that's what I was gonna mention. You know, the main focus here is the TCQ requirement, okay? That deadline is what we look at, that's what we're working for. You know, these other options are any option, we could decide on that. But the process to remediate the ground underneath the train, the lead paint and the asbestos, that is a given. You know, we need to, we gotta do that and then meet the requirements. I don't care if you're savage, you still have to do that. So we need to understand that, we just need to proceed and make sure those three things are taken care of. Now, the other thing that we do after what is the decision we make, but that should not interfere with us moving ahead with ensuring that we're moving on track to accomplish the three requirements by TCQ: asbestos remediation, lead paint remediation, and the solvent. As far as the things we need to do if we decide to keep it, once again, that was the proposal that was given, but there were certain things that you could take a look at. For an example, a cement underneath it. You know, if you don't put oil back in it, you don't need it. And after what you went through, if it was kept, you wouldn't wanna put oil in it anyway, 'cause we saw, we see what oil will do. It only create a problem. You put a cement thing in there, flood, it'd be the same thing. So what we really need to do is make sure we stay on track to, for the remediation. We've already done what?
Asbestos has already been done.
Okay, so asbestos already done. The lead paint, we got a contract for that?
We're not under, the April 20th is really more about the remediation of the soil. The lead-based paint can come afterwards, but the big deadline for April 20th, and she can elaborate better than I can, is to remove the oil from the ground. That's the big deal for April 20th.
So basically, if I understand you correctly, the lead paint is not part of the requirement?
It's not an immediate, an immediate.
So that means after April the 20th, we could deal with lead paint?
Yes, sir.
If necessary.
It's just getting under the, getting to the area under the train to get the oil by April 20th.
Okay, and the last question, you talked in reference to Chapter 252.002, immediate danger to public health and safety. Go back to Option A, is it? Yeah, okay. You mentioned that. You said something in reference to, they say we could do this, do a contract.
Well, let me, let me back up, I'll explain. Okay, 252.022 is basically an exception to procurement, the procurement process. We have a normal procurement process that we go through, but whenever there's something that's an immediate danger to public health and safety, and how there was, we're under the TCQ order, and there was a possible danger to the residents because there was oil, you don't have to go through the normal procurement process. So that was just stating an exception. And if you all, if the council needed to demolish it, or we needed to act fast, then you don't have to go through the normal procurement process, 'cause it's public health and safety.
So...
And that's kinda how the original demolition was considered, yeah.
You kidding me? So that's what, that's what got us where we are today, 'cause, right, that's what I'm finna say, you know, that's why we didn't get it. That's why we didn't know, because someone deemed it was of an emergency, dealing with public health and safety. So they went through, get the contract, and at the end of the day, we still here. Couldn't have been too much of an emergency, and if it's emergency, why wasn't it brought to council anyway? You see, and that was my big thing about this, and everybody keep talking about council, council, council. Well, we dealing with it now. But just like we dealing with it now, we could've dealt with it in September, and we'd probably made the 180-day. So since we didn't do it then, we're gonna do it now. So basically, understanding what we have to do, remediation, we're gonna do that. So the only decision this council now needs to make, we could've made 180 days ago, is whether we're gonna keep the train, or whether we're gonna have a third party to take over the train, or whether we want to demolish the train. So those are the three choices that this council has to make a decision on, and that's not a big deal, because we got people here, so we have a hearing today, so I guess all we gotta do is let the citizens come before us, and let us know how they feel about it. I mean, that's where, that's my two cents.
Councilman Kinnon?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm kinda alluding to what Councilman Doucet also stated. City Attorney, so we're considering this immediate danger to health and welfare of the citizens now, because, you know, this council inherited this, and we have to deal with this. And along with all these phone calls and emails and texts that I've received about this, it's personally dear to my heart because of the train being there, because I, as a kid, I played on that train. But now we're faced and making a decision that's gonna, you know, one, people gonna look at this council and say, "Well, you know, we got so many things that's out there that we need to adhere to, and we have to spend so many dollars to either keep this train or do what we're gonna do with it." So my question is to you as City Attorney, is, one, if we start the process that we talked about earlier, that Councilman Doucet talked about earlier, and getting the soil and possibly doing the paint at a later date, would TCQ give us an extension? Because I don't understand why they're saying, "Well, you must do it on the April 20th day," where that if we start a process, why wouldn't they be able to get, extend us, where we can better, you know, think this over? And I agree with them. We need to let the citizens, you know, chime in and tell us what they really want for this train, 503.
TCQ gave a March 6 deadline, and they've extended it to the 20th, and it would just be solely in their discretion to give us an extension. If the council wants to ask for an extension, that can possibly be done, but it's solely within the, you know, they're an enforcement agency. When they, when they said they wanted it done by March 6th, and then we then went back and asked for April 20th. So if we want an extension, that's something that can be requested, it's solely up to them.
Okay, well, and again, I think we can make the date, it's just that, you know, we got a whole lot of things we have to consider as councilmen and councilwomen.
And they've been very professional with us, and I'm sure they'd be happy to work with the city and the citizens.
Thanks, Mayor.
City Secretary? I think you had a comment from one of our council members, Councilwoman Moses?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Moses has requested I read her statement into the record. "Due to a family emergency, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. However, I would like for these comments to be read as a matter of record for tonight's meeting concerning 503 locomotive. As a lifelong Port Arthuran, I appreciate the donation of Locomotive 503 by KCS to our city in 1957. We are thankful that 503 has been a part of our community for the past 60 years. The locomotive has served as a monument since the date of its arrival. While in its heyday, 503 has served our community as a place where generations have visibly toured and played. The time has come for the city council and citizens to make a wise, conscious decision to do what is best to preserve the remaining lifespan of this locomotive. With that being said, our city is not in a position to address the long-term issues to preserve 503 to a state of excellence that it deserves. We have significant issues facing our city, such as deteriorating infrastructure and deteriorating streets that are not drivable. These are only two of the many of our city's issues. A decision to spend taxpayer dollars to only halfway preserve the 503 is shameful and selfish on our part. The 503 locomotive deserves better. As of now, it is important and imperative that 503 be transferred into the hands of those that have the capability and resources to restore it to its rightful condition. Respectfully submitted, Councilmember Charlotte Moses."
Thank you for that. Now, I'll open it up. If you want to, please approach the microphone. You'll have five minutes to speak to this topic. And if you would, just state your name and address for the record. Evening, Mr. Field.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Warren Field, community advocate, 1147 60th Street. And just wanna say good evening to all of you that are sitting before us. And I have some questions about these options, and really what I'm looking for is clarity. And maybe we get some clarity on these items that I'm gonna point up, maybe point up that might help somebody, inclusive of myself. We were talking about Option B, City Attorney, and it talks about putting it in the hands of a third party. Two words I'm concerned about, you talked about donating the property under that option, and you also talked about fair market value, okay? And I was wondering whether or not if we're talking about donating and fair market value, will we get any of that money as a city? 'Cause you know, we've been giving away everything else, and we haven't been making any money on the things that we give away. So could you give me some clarity on that? Donating the property on one hand, and you talk about fair market value. Will the city get any of that money?
Okay, basically, it wouldn't be treated as a donation, but I wanna clarify that a city normally can't just give personal property of the city away. So whenever you want to dispose of something, you have to kinda look at it two ways. If it, if it's something that you don't need, and you don't have, it doesn't have a value, it would be considered like a salvage. You know, sometimes we have things that, you know, we no longer need, maybe old obsolete computers. So we would treat it like salvage, and basically, you know, we put those things for auction, or sometimes we have things that can be donated that are salvage. And if it meets a public purpose, then there's, there's either a lower cost, a low cost, or sometimes a zero cost associated with it, depending on what it is and depending on how great the public purpose is. The greater the public purpose, then, you know, the less of a cost a person has to pay. But basically, when you wanna dispose of something, you try to get fair market value. Fair market value can be determined by what the market bears. So say we wanna get rid of these chairs, you know, we would, you know, put some type of solicitation out that we don't need these chairs anymore, or we're unable to use these chairs anymore, and we would get proposals and determine it. If it was, say, a group, and we've had like nonprofits that wanted buildings and things like that, if we felt that it had a value to the public, and it would, would be meaningful to the city, then we may be able to do it at a lower cost, or no cost, because, you know, for example, we've given buildings to people to feed children and have homeless programs and things like that. But otherwise, we can't just give it. So when we looked at Option B, you know, because we need to legally and properly move forward with the disposition of our personal property, the best way of doing that is to have a request for proposals. You know, we wouldn't have an auction, but a request for proposals, and look at what kinda proposals you get, and it would, your, your goal is always to get fair market value. But sometimes, you don't know what the fair market value, you know, a 1999 computer, you know, it might not have much of a fair market value, so you'd have to see what the proposals are. But basically, in a nutshell, we would, we would have an RFP put out, telling people what, what the item is and what the city's goals are, and basically, if there is a cost to be paid to the city, it would definitely go to the city and the general fund. For example, the old computer, you know, we might sell it for just $10 or $20, but it would come back to the city. So any payment would go to the city and back to the taxpayers. But you would just give due consideration depending on the, how it could benefit people.
I get the essence of that, and my last concern is Option C. We were talking about a full upgrade of 503, and if that be the case, I was wondering about if there's any associated reoccurring cost in terms of maintenance upkeep after that.
George would be the appropriate person, Mr. Newsom.
Yeah, I've heard estimates of $3,000 a year to upkeep, but you know, we can get a more professional, but that's been quoted to us. Yes, sir.
Seemed like a minimal cost, and certainly, just to give you my position on that, I would definitely be for that, because I know we have a lot of people in our city that are historians, as reflected by the letter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm listening to what's been said here so far.
Name and record, name and address.
Thank you, sir. John Beard, 501 West 15th Street, great city of Port Arthur, Texas. And listening to what's been said so far, one of the things that's been spoken of just recently was about value. And my question to you is, how do you place a value on history, on memories, on culture, on the things that have a great bearing on why you are the city you are and why you are here? And then it brings up the question in my mind, whose value is greater? You know, you wanna assess a value to these things, I say that they have no real value. Their value is intrinsic, their value is inestimable, because of what it says to people who have a memory of what those days and times were like. And if you're considering giving this to someone else, whether you convey it, whether you sell it, or whatever, I want you to be mindful of the fact that before you dispose of that property, by your own rules and ordinances, you have to go to the citizens in a referendum, because even though, as I've spoken to staff, they said, "Well, they consider equipment separate from parks." That park and that train is part of that park. It is part of the real property of the citizens of Port Arthur. And as such, they should be given that opportunity to make that decision, should you decide to go that route. But the key thing I want you to understand from my perspective is, do we not matter, those of us who are citizens? You all are thinking about taking this train and allowing some other group, whether by RFP or proposal or whatever, to come in and take away from this city something, and send it to a place where it has no meaning or history, where it has no tie to the citizens or the history of that town. My question to you is, how can you do that? That's like taking one of your children and selling them in bondage, giving them to someone else, yet that's a part of you. But I wanna go further. Let's look at our quality of life. For sure, we have a lot of problems here, but I like to say, we can also walk and chew bubblegum at the same time. Our problems are not so great that we do not have the financial ability to take care of those problems, while at the same time, take care of and handle history. If we do not preserve the history we have here, if we do not stop at this point, when are we going to start to do something? You only recently took a measure to save Rose Hill and do some work to it. You didn't have to come to the vote for that, you made the right decision. You also put money into the department club to save it, because it has a unique history. The Pompeii Villa, other such sites, some of which are no longer here. We spend more time tearing down than we build back, and there's something wrong with that. So let me suggest to you a fourth option, Option D, which incorporates a lot of what you have in Option C, because Mr. Doucet is right. You're going to have to remediate and do those things TCQ requires, but those are not hard, fast deadlines. You can ask for an extension for the purposes of historical preservation of the city's history and unique culture. You can do that. It's not hard to do. You've gotten extensions before on a number of other things, and this is no different. The remediation can be done, you've addressed it initially. As far as the paint goes, the paint is encapsulated. You can encapsulate the paint, and you can make sure that if there's an issue with lead, that that doesn't become a problem. So that, once again, is something that's doable. But let's go back to that Option D. I would like to see you allow a citizens-based group, since everybody's come to the table but us until this date, a citizens-based group come together with a proposal and plan for not only the restoration, but preservation- for not only the restoration, but preservation of and maintain, maintenance of this train in the city of Port Arthur. It can be done, it's doable. We just have the collective, have to have the collective will and the energy to want to make this happen. We say so often, how much we love this town. Well, it's time we either put up or shut up and start showing it. We saved other parts of our culture and unique history and heritage. I don't see why this train is any different. So I ask you, as you go forward in this, and I'll be glad to sit down with you and help work through this process and even bring parts of the community together that want to see this train stay here, to put together a plan that will allow you to do it, that will minimize the impact to the taxpayers, and also at the same time, because I found in my research, there are state funds available that will allow us to do it. We need to explore all our options. Take care of the health and safety issues of the citizens first. Take care of the infrastructure needs that we have. But one should not preclude the other. You can do both. Thank you.
You have impeccable timing.
That's always.
Thank you for those comments. The microphone is still open. Any citizen want to speak to this agenda item? Ms. Felicia, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
To the mayor and the city council. My name is Felicia Alexander Branch. I reside at 926th and 19th Street. The train is a historical landmark to me because that was created, that was created in Port Arthur. If we get rid of that train like Mr. John Beard said and send it to another city, where's our history? We have so many buildings that we've changed names for before, like Lincoln High School, TJ. We don't even have our history here anymore. And I'm 47 years old, and my kids are 15, 21, and 27. And I have a grandbaby that's three. I want her to be able to come back here and see some kind of history that's still within this city. We have ways and funds to find ways to do other means, so we should be able to find a way to keep 503.
Thank you. The microphone's still open. Hold on, Ms. Sanchez. The councilwoman started already. Come on, you already started. Come on, Ms. Hunt. Name and address for the record.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Mr. Manager, Administrative Staff. Good evening, and my name is Geraldine Hunt, and I live at 2114 Cashmere. I speak before you and ask you to consider keeping 503 in Port Arthur. When people visit a city, they don't visit the mall. They want to see how a city is established, how it was established. That's why you're keeping Rose Hill, the Department Club, and believe it or not, that train station. Back in, I think it was the 80s and early 90s, an organization that was a 501(c)(3) called MODEL approached Kansas City Southern Railroad Company, as well as the gentleman who was operating the company from here. He lived in Orange and worked in Beaumont, but he also had control of the goings and coming of the railroad here in Port Arthur. He helped us bring the Board of Directors down here. And that's how we have that building at the foot of Proctor. It was too good for MODEL to be in. All we wanted was to have an office located in that building. We knew we didn't have the financing to manage it. But we did get consideration from Kansas City Southern Railroad. And they approached the Catholic Church. They have a 501(c)(3) with a track record, and they were able to manage it. And that's how they became the managers of that building. But it's not hopeless when you approach Kansas City Southern in the right way. I think that the Kansas City, the 501(c)(3) ought to be moved from its location and put on the right side, down here at the foot of Proctor, on the right side of Kansas City Southern Railroad facility. Save it by all means. All of our history is important. I looked at, I think we tried to create a whole new town on the north end of Port Arthur several years ago. And we started tearing down buildings and saying we were going to redevelop our downtown area, and it hasn't happened. But at least we can preserve some of our history back here, because this area where the port is, is our area to the world. You know, the port is our front door, not the north end of town. You have the port in the front, at our front door, you have the U.S. Customs Office way on 75th Street. What kind of sense does that make? We have to preserve this community because we depend on you to keep this town going. And I know we have bad streets, but it's important to maintain our history as well. Port Arthur should never, never be moved on the north end. It'll always be anchored right here at the front door of the Gulf of Mexico. And that's where we should keep it, Port Arthur. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Microphone is still open, if anyone. Ms. Sanchez, we're ready for you now.
Gloria Sanchez, 3631 Lexington Avenue, Port Arthur, Texas. I'm here to say that I'm in favor to keep the 503. We have few historical things in Port Arthur, and I don't think that is right, keep demolish every historical things that Port Arthur has. It was a webpage, GoFundMe, that didn't raise over $70,000, maybe more. I don't know if the money can come into Port Arthur to save the 503. The page was created to save 503. Like I said, I don't know if somebody can contact them and try to see if the money can come in and help to save the 503. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, we can't talk from the audience. If you'd like to speak to the mic, please state your name and for the record and address.
Sure. My name is Jason Sapczynski. I don't live in Port Arthur. I live in Bowling Green, Kentucky, 138 Farley Lane. And I am one of the two people who raised the $70,000 almost to stop the demolition of the 503. And actually, we're the reason that it's not already half in a scrap dumpster, because before the city contacted Inland Environments, he was ready to proceed, and I convinced him to give me a couple of days to see what I could throw together. Anyway, but no, the answer is, the money cannot go to the city. The terms and conditions of GoFundMe, you have to agree to some rather legally binding things when you run one of their campaigns. And if, you cannot use the money for anything other than the express purpose that it was raised for. It has to be refunded. I mean, that's just pure, you have to refund it.
And you raised the express purpose was?
To prevent, about $5,000 of it was raised under the premise of just stopping the demolition of the locomotive in general. The balance, which equates to about $62,000, was raised under the auspices of the locomotive being moved from Port Arthur to Rusk, Texas as an interim home until other arrangements were made to take it to either Atlanta, Georgia, or to Florida to be returned to operation at the cost of about $1 million.
Okay.
So.
Any other comments? Councilman Doucette, you had your light on, you were off?
Yes. Jason.
Yes, sir.
You said that the money was raised for $5,000 to stop the demolition?
About that.
So you stopped the demolition?
Yeah, I requested the owner of Inland Environments to give me some time to see whether or not I could come up with a plan to save the locomotive. And as a result, he called off his crews, and they did not begin cutting it up.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure we get this clear. He was under contract, so, you know, if he delayed, it's fine. But when you say you stopped it, that's kind of going a little too far. You didn't have the authority to stop him. He was under contract, quite sure he didn't stop for that purpose. So let's get that clarified, okay? You did not stop him. Okay, the next thing that you said was $5,000 for stop the demolition, and the $62 was to get it to Rusk.
Rusk, R-U-S-K.
Texas.
Yep.
Okay, and so that's all you, the cost is going to be just to get it to Rusk?
To purchase it from the salvage company and to get it to Rusk.
You're going to purchase for?
That was the plan.
From the salvage company?
Right. It's all detailed on the GoFundMe page.
Well, I didn't read the GoFundMe page. You come in before us, and you threw a number out there. I want you to explain the number so we all can understand it. So basically, you're going to pay the guy that was going to demolish it?
And buy it for scrap.
Okay, so that's what, that's what the money for. Okay, I understand. Thank you, Jason.
Oh, you're quite welcome. One other thing that I don't know how many people here are aware of, the locomotive has had no history towards the building of this community or anything else, apart from it being sat here in 1957. It never ran here. It was actually not from the Kansas City Southern. It was a Louisiana and Arkansas locomotive, which then was handed down to subsidiary company, the Louisiana Midland. And when the city of Port Arthur asked for a locomotive from the Kansas City Southern, the KCS actually bought the locomotive from the Louisiana Midland, painted it up as a Kansas City Southern, and put it in the park. So, for whatever that's worth.
I think I have a few hands coming up, Jason, or you, did you want to?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, Councilman Kenloch, sorry.
Thank you. Jason, it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How are we going to preserve our history in Port Arthur, whatever? And I'm glad you really stated this history and how it got here, but it's been in Port Arthur.
Sure.
And what you're saying is probably relevant to me, because when I was a kid, I had my first birthday party on that park, and we played on the train back in the 70s. So if we do that and you take it to Rusk, Texas, I mean, how are we preserving the history in Port Arthur? I mean, I'm kind of mixed up about that issue. And you raised the money to do that, but that's not, in my opinion, the calls and emails that I'm getting. I'm getting to keep the train where it is and move it and do the cleanup of it. So can you clarify that for me? Because if you can't use it to help us or help the train, I mean, I don't care who you give the money to. But if we can't help mediate the problems that we're having to, that this council has faced with, I mean, how are you going to help the citizens of Port Arthur?
Well, two things. First off, locomotives like that, especially sitting in a salt and air environment like this in Port Arthur, there's only two ways to keep them from deteriorating. One is to put them in a climate-controlled building, and the other is to operate them, maintain them in an operable condition. Otherwise, I mean, you know, I mean, everybody, everybody here has been around, you know, in the spring and the fall, when you get those times of the year where everything sweats and whatnot. You can't not stop the deterioration of a machine like that sitting out in the open environment. In terms of how does it help the citizens of Port Arthur, I mean, the best answer I can give you is by this thing going into operation, even though away from here. It gives them the opportunity to see this thing that they grew up with, operating and performing a duty, exhibiting what it is, rather than them going by a park and wondering what it was.
So I'm actually hearing that, and trying to read between the lines what you're saying. So somebody do think it's a value to get that train and spend $1 million, like you said, to get it operable, right? Am I understanding correctly?
There's a lot of people that have interest in railroad history, yes.
Got it, got it. Right. And that would be something that I would be more concerned with that, Jason, is spend the money in Port Arthur and get it operational, get it, help out with here.
There's nowhere to run it here. It's a privately owned railroad that has invited the locomotive to come be a part of its operation, whereas here you've got Kansas City Southern. And I mean, it's, what I do like full-time is, you know, maintaining, rebuilding, training people on the operations steam locomotives. In fact, the only reason I was actually in a position to get involved with this at all is because I'm up in Grapevine, Texas, rebuilding the boiler on a locomotive there. And you can't just go out and run on, you know, a Class 1 railroad. Class 1, like Kansas City Southern, CSX Transportation, Norfolk Southern Corporation, Union Pacific, you know, BNSF, et cetera, et cetera, are Class 1 railroads.
Well, thank you. But would your investors be willing to help the city of Port Arthur not go through a FundMe page, or would they be willing to donate financial support to help get this train where that the citizens, the health issue of the train that's causing? Would they be willing to do that to help out the citizens of Port Arthur?
I can't answer to that. I'm not them.
Wow.
And in terms of the, like, 1,230 people who contributed to the GoFundMe, I mean, literally, it would have to be a, you know, from scratch thing that start it over after all the money's refunded.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, can you give me a little history of how you got involved in the FundMe page, and who donated to the FundMe page? I'm sorry.
Absolutely. It's really kind of a neat story. The only reason I was ever actually able to get into it, I had about three weeks ago a video on my Facebook page, which is That Steam Guy, go viral with about 6.8 million views and almost 8 million people reached. And it was right at the height of that, when the number was really growing on views and reach and everything, that this came up. I was literally scrolling through Facebook one evening, and I saw the Port Arthur News article that Kim had wrote about the locomotive's imminent demolition, or whatever the wording was. And so that was Thursday that I saw the article. The next morning, Wednesday morning, I think that was Wednesday, Wednesday was, either way, Valentine's Day. I started calling the people here, and I found a couple of numbers on the website. I talked to, I forget who all I talked to anyway, but ultimately, might have been Latrice, I don't remember. Somebody gave me Inland Environments' number, and I contacted the owner of that company and said, hey, you know, it would be a real shame to see this thing get cut up in the year 2018. You know, it's, it's, it would be a shame. And, you know, I know of a couple cities around the southeast that have been wanting a steam locomotive to display, you know, and, you know, would you be willing to give me some time to come down and take a look at it before you continue with the demolition? And he said, sure. He asked, you know, well, how long? He's like, can you have an answer to me by Saturday morning? So I said, sure. And I jumped in the car on Friday and came down here. And I took a look at it, and just on outside chance, that it might be in better condition than I'd expect from the photos, I brought what's called an ultrasonic thickness micrometer. It's a little digital device that allows you to measure the thickness of metal when it's something like a tank or a boiler or whatever. So I did a cursory inspection on the locomotive and found that it was, you know, it would absolutely survive being moved. And it was actually in a lot better shape than I thought it would be for an engine sitting in a park out in the weather for 61 years. And I had mentioned it to a friend of mine who does the web design work for the Orlando and Northwestern Railroad down in Florida. And I was just like, wow, this is amazing that this thing has survived to this extent. And, you know, over this time and everything, and, you know, we've got to work on getting it saved. I'd already launched the GoFundMe page to try and, you know, raise money to get it to one of these cities that would be interested in it. And within an hour, I got a phone call back from the people that operate the Orlando and Northwestern. And they said, look, you know, we would be interested, starting after the first of the year, in contributing towards the rehabilitation of the locomotive if you can get it saved and moved to someplace safe for now. And we would like to provide it, and we're, ultimately, the plan is to form a 501(c)(3) trust to place the locomotive into the ownership of. But, you know, it's a process, so obviously, it takes like six months. Anyway, all right, to put in a trust... Anyway, um, all right, to, um, put in a trust, and he said, you know, we would be willing to help contribute towards the, the cost of putting it into service and offer it a long-term home to operate. So then immediately, the GoFundMe page was updated to that plan and it just skyrocketed. You know, I mean, it was, it was almost impossible to keep up with. The, the interest that people have in seeing that locomotive operate just blows me away. So.
But the city have nothing to do with your FundMe page, don't they?
No, ma'am.
Correct.
No, that was, that was all the initiative of myself and Nick Hovey, who unfortunately had to go back up to Pennsylvania for his, uh, full-time job. He's a crane operator.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Uh, Councilman Scott?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So your efforts was basically to try to set this fund-based thing to just get the train away from Port Arthur, correct?
I, I wouldn't.
You, you had no intentions for it staying here?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so your intentions was to move it from Port Arthur?
Correct.
Okay, that's what your efforts was?
Yes.
Okay, then you said it's not history. The train is not Port Arthur history because it was Louisiana and this and that and that. It, it is history because it's been here since nineteen fifty-seven.
Right, and I understand that. I wasn't saying it had no historic, uh, relevance to the city, just that it not operated here.
Okay, okay, no issue. But it is history to citizens here in Port Arthur. So, I'm just looking at, I, I thought maybe, I'm going back to what a couple of other councilmen said. If, if it has such a value, somebody would be willing to put a million dollars in it to restore it, but to put it somewhere else and not help us restore it, I, 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 I see that kind of a problem.
Well, the, the return is it operating after an investment into it? Whereas that won't happen here.
Okay.
It's kind of like, you know, you, you, you have a different demographic of people that might donate money to preserve a B seventeen for static display versus...
What I'm saying, I thought that the, the fund-based thing was basically to try to maintain and keep the, keep it up, keep it here in Port Arthur. That's what I thought it was about.
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So basically, your efforts was basically just to take the train away from Port Arthur and put it somewhere else?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jason, I have no other lights. I have a few other people in the audience that want to speak. Ms. Sanchez, or, no, have you already, come on, Ms. Sanchez, you can't take everybody's time.
Thank you, by the way.
No, no, but, um, well, I bring the web, the page here and I have some question now. You was trying to save five oh three. Are you willing to help Port Arthur to save five oh three? Because he's gonna return the money to whatever donated to the webpage.
Yeah, he just said he's moving it to Rusk and then from there, you'll feel it's on my list.
Yes, but now I asking him, can he help the citizens of Port Arthur to keep five oh three?
He was, from my understanding, the GoFundMe page would have to be reversed.
And he's gonna return the money to them, but he can maybe create another one for us.
Okay.
The, the answer to your question, ma'am, is that I don't believe that I would be successful in raising money for it to sit here static. The interest, when the money started coming in beyond just a couple dollars, was when the future of the locomotive changed from just being preserved anywhere to actually operating. So I don't, I, I don't think I could duplicate those kind of results just for it to sit in a park. It was, the interest came from the prospect of operation.
Mr. Morningstar?
Tejas Morningstar, AKA Leon Wright. Breeze Radio Station, homeless because of Harvey. Have any of you ever heard the story of the breakfast called ham and eggs? Want to be a little entertaining here, because everything's so serious. If you ever set down to bacon and eggs and ham and eggs, you must think of two things. The chicken gave up the egg and still lived. The pig was committed, he had to die. Mr. Jason here, I was the very first person that interviewed him for three and a half hours on the Breeze Radio Station, just after he got off the train, to try to find out the preservation of it and whether it was working. It's valuable to somebody. Otherwise, he wouldn't have all of that GoFundMe page. He told me about the GoFundMe page. I concur with everything he said, but he said one thing in my interview that I want to make sure you understand. You said to me that you did not want the train demolished, correct?
Correct.
The contractor that had the bulldozer and the wrecking ball, you said to me that he was ready to scrap it, but because of the flood that we had that weekend, it would have already been scrapped. Correct? He didn't want it scrapped either. Now, here's a preservationist and even a demolition man that didn't want it scrapped. Here's a GoFundMe page from people all around this nation to see that it's not scrapped, that somebody wants it somewhere. The chicken and the egg, the pig and the pork. Here in Port Arthur, and I know I have time, I'm gonna try to be brief. We have three options. I vote for option C, because of the thing that even if we start the remediation, that doesn't mean that it has to be completed by April thirtieth, that day, is it right? It says you have to start. You have to come in compliance.
I think our environmental person can better answer that, but it has to be complete by April twentieth.
Has to be complete. And the only thing that has to be complete is the ground underneath. And you've already started that, right?
No.
No? Okay, well, like Councilman Doucette said, start. But at the same time, when it is said to me that this train is ninety-eight years old, this engine, this train was gift, somebody had the intestinal fortitude in sixty-one years ago to ask for it. We got it. Thirty-eight years ago, there was a move in nineteen eighty to get rid of it then. This is the se- this is not the first time that, that train has been promised to get rid of it. This is the second time. A little old lady on Proctor Street sold fish and plates of food to stop it then. We talk about history. History is the past, the present, and the future. And we have to recognize that. The city of Port Arthur, this is a central business district. A lot of people don't understand that. But the central businesses have left the central business district. You can't move City Hall, you can't move the fire station, you can't move the, the police department, you can't move the post office. But all of the businesses, after integration in this city, left and the wealthier people with those businesses left. I'm not, I'm not making an issue of race. But I'm saying to the fact that this city, we lost our schools, we lost our memorabilia, all of the trophies that many of us acquired in Bishop Burns, in, in TJ, in Lincoln, was placed in a building called Old Walgreens. They tore that down, they took all the stuff out of it, put it in some storeroom. We don't even know where our memorabilia at. And when they were building the new schools, that's, I asked the, uh, the superintendent then, I said, why don't you have a place in the school where we can keep our memorabilia? Nobody cared. That pool is sitting out there. They wanted to put semen in it. Nobody cared. And I kept re- re- raising sand about it until now, we got a pool. And we got a park. Now, we find money for everything else. I know we got problems. We gonna have problems. We gonna have problems tomorrow. We gonna have a new storm season coming up. There gonna be more problems. But until we sit down and understand the difference between the egg and the pig, we gonna continue to play with ourselves, one after the other. This is not your problem. This was problem years ago. But you are obligated to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Anyone else that would like to speak to this? Uh-oh. Yes, sir. Time's still going?
This man's sitting right here. A year ago, maybe two, maybe a year and a half ago, there was an article in the Port Arthur News, when we talk about history and the history of Port Arthur. There was an article in the Port Arthur News about the railroad and how important the railroad was to this area. The railroad transferred at least three thousand people a day coming from other cities to work in the refineries during the twenties and the thirties. Lumber, our port, the railroad. That train may not have operated here, but it's the last kind of locomotive in the whole nation and we should keep it. Thank you.
Councilman Beard?
First of all, let me say to Mr. Sobieski, thank you for your efforts. It is appreciated. However, I'm gonna have to take exception to some things he said. He mentions about the train not having any ties to Port Arthur. Well, Jason, maybe you just don't know Port Arthur well enough. Because that train was a part of, is a whole part of, he mentioned the LNA Railroad, which is Louisiana and Arkansas. The Louisiana and Arkansas Railroad is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Kansas City Southern. Kansas City Southern Railroad was founded by the founder of Port Arthur, Arthur E. Stillwell. That's the history. And what, what, what I find, though, it's good about what he said is that KCS bought it back from the other railroad and donated it to Port Arthur. Do you see what I'm getting at? It's, it's, it's keeping that tradition alive. It's keeping that tie that binds, as we like to say, alive. And that's what we have to do here with historic preservation. But here's another problem I see. And I hope you listen very carefully to what Jason said. And I hope you, some of you who have computers get a chance, go back and read the GoFundMe page and some of the comments and some of the Facebook comments. But he made mention of the fact of how this all started. And it was because your contractor, Inland Environmental, got in touch with him. But he didn't get in touch with you. And he didn't get in touch with us. This whole process went so far along until nobody knew about it till the Port Arthur News stepped in and started talking about it. I found out about it shortly after the, the hurricane sent it, because I was driving down the street and saw the Coast Guard and TCEQ at the site looking at remediation issues. So I got a phone, I did a little inquiry about it later on and then happened to see again, only recently, the bulldozer getting ready to demolish. So I'm wondering what's this all about? And I made a few calls. But that's real problematic to me because, as it was said in the newspaper, count, correct me if I'm wrong, the contract was largely given and based on the fact that the cost was so low. And part of that cost was, and I have a copy of the contract, that it was going to be sold to someone for seven thousand dollars. Now, they're gonna take some, now, now, tell me this. What's any different about someone taking our merchandise, selling it to someone for seven thousand dollars? What was any different about the alleged theft of water meters? Is there any difference? If, since that's the elephant in the room, let's acknowledge it. What's any different? That it was given to somebody else for little nothing and they in turn sold it? And now Jason hasn't even told us what the other plan is. Well, he did tell us. He talked about the fact that it was going to be put in another museum or some organization or body, or as far as I think his conversation and I went, that it was going to go to Orlando, Florida? That Orlando, Florida, and some other interests, I think, in Atlanta, were interested in the train as part of an operating museum. That's well and good, but that's not the only option you have. If the highest best use is that for to ride, to, for to give other people pleasure, that's fine. But what about us? What about us? We have the same right and opportunity. We can raise money. We can create nonprofit organizations to do so. I'm ready at this time, hey, wait a minute. Put your money where your mouth is. Here's a hundred dollars. What'd that say? What'd that say? Here's a hundred dollars, ready to be committed today to keeping that train here and doing the exact same thing he did. And maybe he can talk to his twelve hundred or so people.
No, hold on, wait, 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 let's not start that, Joe.
Maybe, maybe he's got, maybe, maybe he can talk to some of those people who are such lovers of trains. I've ridden trains all over the country. I've visited the Tennessee Railroad Museum in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and ridden on one of those lines. If you go on my Facebook page, you'll see some pictures of it. And I've ridden other trains across the country. Rapid Transit, you name it. Nothing like steam locomotive. And it's good if we can do that, but the first step is, as Doucette said, we gotta remediate and then we gotta save it. But I find it highly infuriating and ironic that someone else, once we talk about value, would take something that's of value to us, or we don't think has any value, sell it for value, restore it for value, and then yet sell it or convey it to someone else and we don't know a thing about it. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Doucette?
Well, Mayor, now that somebody really want to come up and talk about the third party or demolishing the train and I keep hearing everybody come in talking about keeping the train. And that's all I ask for the hearing for, so we get a basis of what the citizens want. And I feel that I've heard enough to make a motion.
Hold on one second, let me just, we still had some people in the audience that wanted to speak and then we'll get to your motion. I know Mr. Field spoke and there's, I see hands going up. I'll, I'll get to you soon as I get. It's the same? Okay. Mr. Field, go ahead, come on one time. They're, they're on me about people talking more than once.
Thank you, Mayor, and you know, I thoroughly understand that. Eleven forty-seven Sixth Street, Warren Field Community Advocate again. You know, we got all kind of people coming out, uh, coming to Port Arthur when we have problems in terms of equipment or whatever we got, in terms of hard items to be sold or whatever. We don't know the unencouragement of the deal, how far it goes down and what these people are talking about in depth and who's making the money, et cetera. But I do know one thing, we're not making any, the city of Port Arthur. And we're definitely in need of money, but we give away everything, even in the auctions, uh, for a little or nothing, and we're not getting anything. And we got a sundry of problems. Now, I would certainly would want the community, as a community advocate, to go with this idea of John. Let a committee, give us an opportunity to have a committee like John has, uh, has stated, to come together and, and, and try to, uh, find a solution to this problem in terms of what we want to do with that. I would be the first one to volunteer for that and to work like a dog to make sure that it works. Okay, so councilor should give us an opportunity, as, uh, John Beard said, to get this thing done in terms of committee, come back to you and give you our resolve.
Okay. Mr. Morningstar, one, one more time, come on, get, they got you for, they're gonna run me out of here.
Morningstar, okay? The emotional and cultural attitude of railroad, I draw your attention to A. Philip Randolph. Historical. The Pullman Porters, the inventors that did things to make sure that the locomotives and the engines and the railroads ran across this country. The Gander dancers that laid track. In fact, I laid track right over there on Railroad Avenue. I'm eighty-one years old. Man asked me, do you know how to drive a spike? I said, I can learn. The emotional and cultural attitude with this train is far in most of our DNA. And I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Morningstar. Uh, my opinion of, of the train, just for, for my comments, is I've always said we only got one move in it, if we're gonna do something. If we're gonna move it to one side or the other side of the park, remediate the ground and then go out for the RFPs. I'm totally amenable for that, because again, we've heard from the historical societies. Jason has a group. Uh, Councilmember Beard has a hundred or eleven hundred dollars towards his new group. So, um, hopefully we can, um, get some good RFPs to choose from, whether they give you some time to get your five oh one Cs together. Let's move it to the other side of the park. And then from there, we'll take RFPs on who can do the best for the train, for whether it be in Port Arthur, it be Seafarers, whatever it may be, we'll have the RFPs. So, Councilman Doucette?
Well, I, I'm more interested in, uh...
Well, I, I'm more interested in, uh, the RFPs, Mayor will be opening it up for everybody. I think right now, we need to do exactly what is required of us from TCEQ. We're on track to do that. Let's get that done. We know that it's gonna cost us $45,000 to move that train approximately, that to move the train out of the way and get the grounds remediated. That's the city's cost, so let's go ahead on and get that done. Now, in order to adhere to what the citizens requesting, I think it, sometime while we getting this remediated, that, uh, Farmer Councilman Beard get a group together and they meet with the manager, and they start, uh, presenting what they propose to do. And in that respect, council come back at another time in the future and find out if the city can partnership with this particular group whereby they could raise money, but the cities can also contribute to that. Because, you know, we have a, we have a part in that too. We're not gonna just say y'all go raise all of the money. You know, uh, as I said the first time, you know, I got my own thoughts about it, but it's not important what I think, it's what citizens think. And from what I heard today, they want, they want a chance. They want a chance to see what they can do. And I think that we need to make sure that they get that opportunity, and not on that, but we need to understand, uh, whenever they meet with the manager, the manager need to understand that the city has an obligation too. And I will say this, if we can spend money to preserve Rose Hill, we need to start looking at how we do business in this city. The city allow Rose Hill to get to a condition that it's cost over, it's gonna cost over a million dollars to restore. You say three? Well, I'll just say a million. But if this council can approve money to restore a house that was donated to the city and entrusted to upkeep, and we're allowed to get to a point where we gotta put $3 million back into it to fix it, we need to take a look at what the citizens come before us and ask us in reference to the train. It was donated to the city. So, I'm just looking at all of the facts presented before us today, and I do believe that the citizens need to be given the opportunity, and I'm glad that the citizens step forward to say that we're not just gonna let the taxpayers, but we're gonna work too. We're gonna start something. We're gonna try to do something. But I want to make it clear, my stance is that the, the city's gonna stand behind the citizen. We have a responsibility if, when we come back and decide that, yes, we're gonna partner with them and we're gonna do it, they'll know what the city's gonna do, and we need to be prepared. So at that time, I'm quite sure we will now get costs, not estimated costs, but we'll have exactly how much money is gonna require to do that. So citizens, citizens will know when we approve something, how much we're approving. So at this time, I make a motion that we direct the city manager or authorize the city manager to, to continue the remediation cleanup as required by TCEQ, meaning to make sure that we get the train free of asbestos, and also the underground underneath it remediated. And that's also giving them authorization to contract someone to move it so we could get the soil clean. And also with that motion, that, uh, we delay a founder decision on how are we gonna do this with the train until a group of citizens can meet with the city manager, and they get together and bring another proposal back to us and arrest the citizens on exactly what the plans are and what's gonna happen. So everyone will understand what they're asking and what we're approving, without approving something that really, we don't know what it's gonna cost. This way, we know what we finna spend right now. We have to spend. That's the city's responsibility for TCEQ, and we need to get that. So right now, we on time to do that within the timeframe given us. Let's not put too much on our plates.
You're, so I have your motion. Um, I'm with you on the first part. The second part, though, is, is still, I'm with the RFP process. You know, again, I, I love Councilman Beard and I love my man, Mr. Lawyer, but after this meeting, they may not agree. And I think it'd be okay to let them have both the proposal, you know, just more than one group.
Well, 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 the thing is...
We can talk about that later.
No, well, no, let's, let's clarify this because we haven't, people come, an RFP is when you open it up.
Yeah.
But all the citizens came before us today. I haven't heard anybody, well, one individual and asked the, the Jason who started Fund that came before us and said, somebody else. So as of what I've heard today, I'm not entertaining, nothing but giving these citizens opportunity to keep this train here.
I, I think that's what, we're both saying the same thing, uh, but there may, like I was saying, there may be more than one citizen group in Port Arthur that wants to keep it. That's all, that's, so, I don't wanna just individualize it. I love Councilman Beard.
No, 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 no. Well, then you, you're clear. We on the same track, Mayor. I would, I would assume, but you see, when we say RFP, when you send that out, they go, you can send them out over the whole...
And we have the right to reject anything.
Alright.
We got the right to reject anything, especially since the comments we've heard from the citizens.
Okay, so the RFP will be to keep it here, though. All good, Mayor. We, we on the same sheet.
Motion, Council, did, did you have something on that, Councilman Scott, or you just second the motion?
Yes.
Second, okay, there's a...
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to clarify the motion so we make sure we have the, you have a motion to authorize the city manager to continue with the remediation and follow up with what TCEQ is required by the deadline, and you also have authorized the city manager to pursue a contract or pursue someone to move it so that you can facilitate that.
Yeah.
And you will put off further, uh, further action until...
Pending proposals.
Pending proposals.
Right.
Okay.
Um, this has been moved, yes, sir.
Hold up. But like the mayor said, uh, also with him getting with them, we gonna send RFQ, I mean, RFPs out.
Yeah. I think, can we do that in the pre-bid meeting? Is that part of it, that you go?
When you, I think you, we understand what your motion is, and then we can clarify what the wording of a RFP at a later time. Yeah, we'll devise a process.
All right. It's, Council, it's been moved and seconded that we, um, well, excuse me, there's a motion on the floor that we, um, execute, there's, direct city manager to execute option C, which, what C, which, give it to me.
Let me get a motion.
Options are...
We're gonna pay the $45,000.
Right.
Just to expend the $45,000, it'd be good, to move it from the side of the park.
Fix it.
You gotta move it. Do you have time, will you have time to go for this? Okay. Okay. There is a motion on the floor, as stated by, um, city attorney, to direct city manager expend $45,000, um, for, um, the movement of the train from one side of the park to the other so we can remediate, uh, the ground under it. Um, uh, the city manager.
Mayor, I just wanted to be clear. The $45,000 figure that was mentioned earlier is an estimate. We don't know what the actual cost is gonna be. It could be 65. I, I really don't know.
So you want me to put a...
Once we go out for bid, we will know what the cost is to move.
Take the price off it.
Okay, yeah, I'll take that.
Take, take, take the cost off. Amend the motion to remove the cost because, you know, right now, what we need to do, we just need to make sure that we give the manager the authority to get this done.
TCEQ.
Without coming back to us, and we make this timeframe, so we don't have to worry about no fine. Because, you know, we talked about the money, but we could go back to Mr. Newsom, you know? He got, he got some contacts. He made us happy the other day, so we could have thought, y'all, we may save that 40.
Uh, the, the motion's on the floor, then it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposals? Ayes have it. Um, is that good for the discussion? All right. Oh, I thought you was saying you need to, you haven't said anything to Councilman Lewis?